So we're gonna begin the meeting of the Amherst School Committee. We don't have any members virtually tonight, so we're just gonna jump right in with public comment. So before our first agenda item, is there anyone in the public who would like to make a public comment? You may come up to the microphone and speak for three minutes. Come on up, Vince.
So my name is Vincent O'Connor. I live at 175 Summer Street Apartment 12. Have three issues to comment on. The first is that I would want to commend the Chair of the Elementary School Committee for her comments last night at the City Council meeting, and urge that if it is possible for her comments to be inserted in the record of this meeting in such a way that those who are, who wish to observe the proceedings of this meeting can access her comments from last night. I think they were very timely and well-studied. And I think it is quite unfortunate that the town officials are behaving in this manner over such a long period of time. The second matter is that I want to urge the Elementary School Committee to thoroughly consider all the facts and figures of whether to maintain an elementary school at Wildwood School or to move sixth graders to the middle school. I think it is a close call, it sounds like, and sometimes the site that you know will present fewer problems than the site you do not know. And I just urge that over the next period of time that the committee examine all the facts that are available and make a real considered decision as to whether they should go forward with what had been proposed in the past, although in fact it was proposed without knowing all the implications. The third issue is, has to do with what I believe and was expressed at a prior City Council meeting by some attendees who did not speak, about the need for thorough training by school staff in all the school buildings regarding any attempt by individuals who claim to be ICE, although lacking in identification, to enter the building and engage in activities that are forbidden by the school procedures. I think it's important to have procedures whereby some individual would contact the police and there'd be a way to inform teachers to lock their classrooms and not allow anyone to enter who is not authorized by the principal. I think that is an important thing, given the kind of misbehavior and quite frankly illegal activity that ICE individuals and their associates have been engaging in across the country. So I think we can expect things to get worse as the quotas seem not to be filled. So I, again, thank you for your time and...
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment tonight? I didn't receive any emails or voicemails. So, we are going to go to our next agenda item, which is to hear from some fifth graders from Fort River. So first, I just wanna say I was contacted by two teachers at Fort River, Deb and Anna, about a project, an initiative that their class was working on, and I invited them to come speak to the whole committee and the superintendent about their initiatives. So, Fort River fifth graders, you may come up to the table. So I understand you're gonna take turns speaking. Whoever's speaking should speak right into the microphone so that everyone at home and everyone in the room can hear you. You can pass it back and forth.
Good evening, Regional School Committee members and Dr. Z.
My name is Elizabeth Marlet.
I'm Alex Falat.
And my name is Katie Zumba. We're students in the fifth grade of the Caminantes of Fort River Elementary. We're here because the plastic is severely damaging our environment and ourselves. This first semester, we've launched a campaign to reduce plastic pollution in Amherst.
Thank you so much for having us. We greatly appreciate all of you for letting us be here today. We are fifth grade Caminantes at Fort River Elementary School, and we are here because the plastic environment is severely hurting the earth and us. We have been running a campaign this spring, and we are trying to reduce the plastic pollution in Amherst.
According to the World Wildlife Fund, or WWF, the world uses over forty-two million metric tons of plastic every year, and only eight point seven percent is recycled. Eleven million tons go into the ocean each year, and according to the World Economic Forum, one garbage truckload of plastic goes into our oceans every minute. According to the World Wildlife Fund, the world uses forty-two million metric tons of plastic every year, and only eight point seven, seven percent is recycled. Eleven million tons go into the ocean every year, and according to the World Economic Forum, a tonne of trash goes into the ocean every minute. A byproduct of plastic, microplastics, are also a big problem. Microplastics are tiny pieces of plastic that plastics break down into. They get into our water and food, which gets inside of us. Microplastics can also contain toxic chemicals such as buprenol A, BPA, which is a chemical that is widely used to make polycarbonate plastics found in products like food and drink containers, eyeglass lenses, and electronics. According to a study by ULE, microplastics can cause DNA damage, organ dysfunction, abnormal immune response, and a variety of chronic diseases.
While researchers are not aware of the effects of plastic on animals, we know that at least 2,144 species so far have been found to encounter plastic pollution in their natural habitats. It is estimated that up to ninety percent of seabirds and fifty-two percent of sea turtles have mistakenly eaten plastic. This means 3.3 million turtles have eaten plastic. Did you know that in one school year, all of our schools in Amherst use about 244,000 utensils made of plastic? Do you know that in one year of school, all of the schools in Amherst use approximately 244,000 utensils of plastic? As you can see, getting rid of plastic just in our cafeterias can still make a huge impact on our earth. From the time we're in kindergarten to now, our schools have used about 1,344,000 plastic utensils. Think about that for a moment. Say you've been working here for ten years. That's about 24,400,000 plastic utensils that have just been thrown out either into the ocean or on the ground into a landfill.
Now you can see from the point that we're looking at, it's not just a few plastic forks or spoon here and there. It's over 1 million pieces of plastic going to our landfills since our time in kindergarten. This is about four tonnes of plastic. Our earth would be so much better without all the plastic we are producing from our school.
This is why we are proposing using metal utensils for our Amherst school cafeterias instead of plastic ones. We are here to ask you to make this change. Metal utensils have many benefits such as, we believe it is more cost-effective in the long run because you don't have to keep buying new utensils every month, and you can reuse the metal utensils multiple times instead of throwing them away, and they don't produce microplastics and they aren't made of fossil fuels. As far as cost goes, we can get a grant from the government to let us pay for new metal utensils. One such grant is called Reduce Reuse Repair Micro Grant from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. We also already have a dishwasher in our cafeteria from when we used to use metal utensils. If you would like, we can help you look into the grants.
We also had a bake in Grassville on May 31st to raise money for our campaign. We raised a grand total of $648.87. Our class is hoping that we could donate the money to the schools to use for new utensils. But we need to know, can we donate it to the schools?
We also brought with us these plastic bags. We have collected these over a week and a half and wanted to show you all this. These bags are from our breakfast cart in the morning, and we don't need them. We think that the school should stop buying them because it's a misuse of money that hurts our environment. We could use the money to buy other things. They also come with these little twist ties that hold them closed, and those are one of the main causes for getting stuck in turtles' throats and other sea animals. We also had a petition that was originally for compostable utensils, but after meeting with several people, we have decided that metal utensils are a better way to go in our cafeterias. Though the petition was originally for compostable utensils, you can see that many people are in favor of a more sustainable solution. This is the petition of us.
Thank you.
Feel free to look over it. This is the one for compostable utensils, and we collected these at the farmer's market and from students around our school. Thank you. Now we'll hear from our friends in the other class.
Hi, my name is Alice Lackner.
And my name is Carolyn Graham-McLean, and we're fifth graders at Fort River Elementary School.
We are also, oh, we are also working to reduce plastic pollution in Massachusetts just like our classmates Alex, Elizabeth, and Katie.
We are currently supporting Bill S630/8916. This bill bans things like black plastic, plastic carryout bags, plastic straws.
Unless it's for medical reasons.
Food service accessories such as utensils and more.
We recently filed a petition for this bill at the local farmer's market in Amherst and managed to get 181 signatures. Here they are.
This shows that a lot of people care about reducing plastic pollution in Massachusetts. We showed them to Mindy Dom, who's going to bring them to the legislator in Boston.
We also raised awareness and made a website about reducing plastic pollution.
But as you might be wondering, what does this bill have to do with our schools? Well, that's a good question, and here's our answer.
Part of this bill does ban polystyrene straws and black plastic in any permitted kitchens under Massachusetts state food codes as a food establishment, which would include our schools.
We are also hoping that in the near future there will be bills or laws that ban plastic utensils in schools.
If plastic utensil become illegal in the near future, then why not change now?
Our class is working on the same campaign to reduce the quantity of plastic in Massachusetts.
We are supporting the law S630H916.
This law prohibits things like black plastic bags, wallets of plastic for one use only.
No, it's not prohibited in cases of medical.
Utensils of plastic and more.
Recently, we filed a petition and got 181 filings.
Also, we created a website to inform the public about plastic pollution.
We hope that in the future, we will have laws prohibiting plastic utensils.
Then, if the plastic utensils are soon to be banned, why not change it now?
We do have a copy of the bill if anybody would like to look over it.
Sure, you can give it to me. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We want to thank all the people who helped us during this project, including Susan White, Representative Mindy Dom, Senator Joe Commerford, Office, Chris Bignell, Corey Nicholas, Donna Baker, Timothy Austin, Anna Paul, Deborah Felix, and our bake sale donors, and all the people who made tonight's visit count. Thank you, thank you parents for letting your kids stand here tonight with us.
That's okay, that happens all the time. You can just leave it off.
Thank you to all of you who helped us, including Susan White, Representative Mindy Dom, the Office of Senator John Commerford, Chris Bignell, Corey Nicholas, Donna Baker, Timothy Austin, Anna Paul, Deborah Felix, and all of you who helped with the baking of pastries. We also want to thank the district for supporting our civic literacy and engagement projects started by Mr. Austin and Ms. Tammy. We hope you all will continue to do so. We like working together in groups, doing presentations, and getting a chance to be creative. It is fun, and we like coming to school to do it. It encourages us to use our voices. We have become more confident speaking in front of strangers and teaching others about our campaign. Most importantly, it gives us a chance to make a difference in the world.
It's fun to work in groups, as presentations, and have the opportunity to be creative. It's fun, and we want to go to school to do it. It helps us use our voices, and now we have more confidence when we talk publicly and teach others about our campaign. The most important is that we have the opportunity to make a change in our environment.
This year, the other fifth graders in our school had campaigns about fighting food insecurity and reducing gun violence.
Thank you, school committee, for having us here tonight and for your time and consideration of this issue. We hope that you make these changes to reduce plastic in our schools for our earth, our animals, our health, the students in our district, and the generations to come. Thank you for having us here this afternoon and listening to us.
We hope that you will make these changes for our planet, our animals, our health, our students in Amherst, and the next generations.
You can stay, if you wouldn't mind staying at the table. There might be some questions from the committee members. I'm gonna go to questions in a second, but first I want to say thank you so much, students, for coming to speak to us, and thank you to Ms. Paul and Ms. Felix for bringing you to speak to us. I loved hearing you speak in both English and Spanish. I think this is the first time in my memory that we've had a speaker or a public comment in Spanish. So it's wonderful and beautiful, and it really shows the success and the brilliance of our Caminantes program. And thank you for translating everything you said into English for monolinguals like me. I really appreciate it. I think it's great that you have not just worked amongst yourselves and talked about your initiatives and come to see us, but you've also branched out and talked to other people in the district. You've talked to Mindy Dom and Joe Commerford. It really shows how much you care about these initiatives. And so, I'm going to see if anyone on the committee has any questions. Sarah, Dr. Z first, of course.
I am so humbled and proud of you and the great work that you've done researching. So first of all, coming from the Virgin Islands, I'm gonna tell you that we transitioned from plastic straws to paper straws or no straws at restaurants. Because, you know, the Caribbean Sea and the ocean, we're impacted. We know that sea life, our island is made of coral and coral reef. Like, there's so many things that's impacted by environmental changes. So this is a very powerful project that you're moving forward with. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that you took the time at the end of your presentation to talk about the other fifth grade projects that are, you know, happening in your school. And that's great. That shows that collaboration and that love that you put forward at Fort River. Thank you, thank you for this. And I think that Shannon is on, but who we need to talk to next to answer some of the questions is probably our Operations Division to talk about what can we do and what can't we do, and how do we transition to a more environmentally friendly way of serving lunch. So definitely, I would like to set that up with you and your teachers to speak to our Opera School ends on Friday. But you'll be sixth graders next year, so we can continue forward and make sure that we have those conversations around what we can and what we should do. And let's hear the great work. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Z. Sarah?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that excellent presentation. You clearly put a lot of work into your research and your asks of us. I understand the plastic cutlery. Totally get that. I don't understand, I guess, the breakfast, did you say, is in bags? Can you just talk more about, this is all, like, it's already served? I mean, it's already entrees, and it's wrapped up, and you just pick one up or something? How does that?
So the breakfast, they come in this sort of like insulated cart, and they like wheel it to your classroom in the morning, and then you open it, and there's like a bag, and it has, usually it has like cereal, like graham crackers, raisins, and like an apple in it. Yeah, and it's all just wrapped up in plastic, just sitting there. And like, you could just have them loose in the cart, so like this.
But are you saying they're individual portions already prepared and in bags? So you just grab a tray or something?
Yeah, you just like grab a bag out of the cart.
Thank you. Okay.
Bridgette?
Well, I would just add to the chorus of folks who are impressed by your research, by your diligent and thoughtful approach, for your advocacy. I think that the idea of returning to metal utensils is a great one and one I think we could probably figure out a way to realize because, like you said, the cost benefits can weigh out, and that's probably the only huge barrier that I could see in that regard. And for presenting in English and Spanish as well, I just really appreciate the level of fluency that you bring, like, that you brought the depth of research in both languages. And so I want to share my appreciation, and I just have a huge love for these civic action projects every year. And I was really just enlivened by you bringing it to us tonight. Thank you.
Irv?
I love the way you did the project. You know, entrepreneurs go out and do these kinds of things every day, and they bring new things. And the one thing that I would like for you to do is to look at what the cost of utensils, metal utensils, will be. And then, look at the cost of then maintaining those metal utensils by washing them, i.e. what is the power that's going to be used? Is there any relationship between the power that is being used and the disposable utensils? Those are kinds of things that everyone would like to see. And I also think that, you know, you've done such a great job. And the thing, my heart goes out, because I used to be a fifth grade teacher, and I used to think that I could teach fifth graders anything, and including quantum mechanics. Because, you know, the saying, wherever you are, there you are? Well, fifth graders understand that. Anyway, I think that you've done a great job, and I appreciate you coming towards us.
Deb?
I'm trying to find the schematics at the moment for the new elementary school building. Does any, did you happen to do the research to find out if there's a dishwasher included in the new design?
Um, we haven't, yeah, no, we haven't. We know that we have one at our school from when they used to use metal utensils, and I think that they also have one at Wildwood. So it might be possible to bring them to the new school, but we're not 100% sure because we haven't seen all the layouts yet.
Thank you. Just to answer your question about donations, I looked into it, and apparently there's a process that you have to follow to donate to a school district. So I'll get in touch with Ms. Paul or Ms. Felix about how you can donate the proceeds from your bake sale, which I was so impressed to hear that you made over $600 on the bake sale that you want to donate it to the school. That's so generous of you, and we really appreciate that. And thank you to your parents for all of their help as well. Any final thoughts?
I am impressed. Again, thank you to the parents. I know it's a late even, but thank you so much. And please continue to just like push their curiosity, push their growth. Thank you to the teachers. This is an awesome, awesome project. And more so, your presentation this evening, and to have the courage to come and do it with smiles and with like enthusiasm and conviction. Like, when you believe in something, knowing that you're coming in front of anyone to just speak. It looks like a small group here, but you're doing this on YouTube Live. So this is now memorialized for you for a very long time. And so when you start to build your portfolio, you'd be like, I was an activist from fifth grade. I pushed for change from fifth grade and continue to use your voice for change. We will definitely be in touch. Shannon is also the Finance Director, and so we can definitely guide on how to make the donation to the school district. So definitely. Thank you.
Thank you again. Well, that is a hard act to follow. So we're gonna go right on to the next agenda item, which is the Chair's update. So I do have a few updates. My first update is about Amherst Media. So as you all know, I'm the Amherst School Committee Representative on the Amherst Media Board of Directors. Amherst Media has had an interim Executive Director in place for almost a year now, Yana Ok, who has, who was a longtime employee and has stepped up to be interim Executive Director. But we now have a permanent Executive Director who will begin July 2nd, and that is Rachel Figura Smith. She has a lot of experience in being Executive Director for nonprofits. She lives in Pelham and has two kiddos, and she happens to be one of the newer members on the Pelham School Committee. So Rachel's gonna be joining Amherst Media as their Executive Director starting July 2nd. Yes, very exciting. Okay, a few other things. So a few school committee members have asked me about some of our policies and protocols about communicating with school and district staff. So I just want to say a few things about that. In general, we should direct our communications to the superintendent and not directly to any school or district staff member. This is a request that Dr. Z has made of us, and it's a standard practice in most school committees, according to MASC. And it is explicitly called out in policy BHC, which states, "The school committee wishes to maintain open channels of communication between itself and the staff. The basic line of communication will, however, be through the superintendent." So what does this mean in practice? So I have a few scenarios. So what should you do if a staff member contacts you? So if a staff member contacts you, you can respond to them, and you can talk to them in person or by phone or by email. Then, you should refer any issues, problems, or concerns to the superintendent or to the school committee. In fact, the superintendent's contract, which as you know is signed between the school committee and the superintendent, indicates that the school committee members shall promptly refer all criticisms, complaints, and suggestions called to their attention to the superintendent for study and recommendation. So another scenario is, what should you do if a staff member invites you to come to school for a visit? So another scenario is what should you do if a staff member invites you to come to school for a visit or if you would like to visit a school? So per Policy BHC, you should contact Dr. Z before making any arrangements to visit. Policy BHC says, "Individual school committee members interested in visiting schools or classrooms will first inform the superintendent and then make arrangements for visitations." It goes on to say this policy that official visits by committee members will be carried on only under committee authorization. Now, as far as I know, the school committee has not voted on having a member visit a school, although that would be in complying with our policy. But I just wanted to make you all aware of Policy BHC. And lastly, what should you do if you have questions or issues that you think one or more staff members could answer or address? You should direct that to Dr. Z. Okay, so before we go on, I just want to say one other thing, which is that in Dr. Z's superintendent's update today, she's going to talk about the Amherst K-6 restructuring update. And we had a little bit of a miscommunication and I had a little bit of a miss in that she intended for that to be part of her superintendent's update. I had intended to add it as an agenda item and I didn't communicate that fully to her and I neglected to add it as an agenda item. That was just a clerical error on my part. But there's no decision to be made that's in front of the committee today. So it's going to be part of Dr. Z's superintendent's update. And I think that's it for chairs updates. Any questions, Sarah?
Yes, do you want to speak about the last night's vote at town council?
I was going to do that on the fiscal '26 budget update agenda item, but thank you. Are there any school committee member announcements or subcommittee updates? Sarah?
Yes, so I'm the representative to this Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC, and it had its final meeting of the school year a couple of weeks ago. William Scher is the representative for the regional committee. He was not able to attend, so perhaps I can just speak to both. And I'll maybe repeat it at a regional meeting. I think the only comments that I want to bring forward is that there's an interest in, among the parents or the council for educating us, maybe all the school committees and the public, more deeply about how special, how the special education services are delivered in the classroom and particularly the work of pairs. So they might reach out to the chairs. I suggested that they ask to be put on the agenda, so they may reach out to the chairs. They may convey this request through Tanya McIntyre. I don't know. So that's one item. The other is that, and then this is regional, but I don't know, I need to, somebody ought to bring it up, that there is a hope that the leadership at the middle school will include someone with expertise or significant experience in special education so that those students are not, so that they're more clearly seen in all the activities of the school.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, moving on to superintendent's update.
All right, we're going to move through. It's been a couple of closing weeks and I wanted to make sure we addressed some of the critical parts of the update. We all know the three goals of the priorities of the district and student safety and well-being, healing and stabilization, and data and equity for all. Classroom highlights, Cracker Farm last week held its annual sixth grade play. The play titled "The Space Between Us" featured a talent show, classic sci-fi references and the everyday battles of the sixth grade. The play was a fantastic reminder of the joy of being a kid. Fort River held its field day last week. I did not get to go because the original day shifted, but I heard it was fun and great. So they started the day with their color teams and they had students from K-6 going to a variety of stations. It all focused on team building. Sixth graders took on leadership roles and they helped younger students. And it was great. The afternoon was filled with more fun and individuals from third through sixth grade, their teachers dressed up as Disney villains using their newspaper and tape. And for the first time in Fort River Field Day history, 10 years, the sixth graders beat the staff. So it was really great. Ms. Kaiser organized the day, thank you so much, and says she could not have done it without all of the staff and caregivers, volunteers that help lead teams and stations to make the day a huge, huge success. And then at Wildwood, Mr. B, the PE teacher, set up his special end of the year obstacle course with some sixth grade students. He used every mat, every cone, any just piece of equipment. He could to create an obstacle course and fill the gym and it was wonderful. It is the graduation season at these three schools. So today we had two moving up ceremonies in the Amherst district. We had Cracker Farm and we had Fort River. And so it was really, yes, we had Cracker Farm and we had, it was like, what happened to Wildwood? Wildwood is tomorrow morning. And so it was really great to sit in. Fort River had 49 graduates that's transitioning up. And Cracker Farm had, was it 40? 40, I can't remember. It's approximately 44, 42, 45? Nope, 50? Could you just say the number, Seth? 50, thank you. All right. And so it was really great to engage with them. And so tomorrow morning is Wildwood. Well, I want to say that I want, there's a lot of questions that's happening around and everyone keeps asking sixth grade move, new school. I've entitled the project, "Amherst K-6 District Restructuring." It's not two separate things that are happening separately. It is one district move into reformation where we are going from three distinct buildings to still three buildings. However, two of the buildings will be Amherst own or run and one building is in the middle school. That's our current model that we're, so I wanted to talk about the work. And I did send an email earlier today and I want to clarify. I've gotten feedback from a lot of staff that they are very much, they don't like the fact that they hear a lot of things for the first time from me at school committee meetings. And because school committee meetings are open meetings and you ask questions, I answer the questions. However, for the upcoming school year, what we are going to start doing is advertising key topics that I'm going to speak about in my superintendent's updates. So that if something is posed to me on the floor, the staff is at least aware ahead of time. So today I did send that email so that staff members could be aware of what was going to be talked about. But more critically, there's been a lot of conversations as the, as the builders and the project has been moving on. And I'm really grateful to Allison Estes and Tara Luce because they've been leading both buildings. And Derek Shea also, because this is not just a Wildwood and Fort River. This is an entire district. And so the conversations have really been collegial, but also all three staff are now trying, we're trying to engage all of them in what this new school is going to look like. So we have started a restructuring process, aligning grade configurations, making sure that we are, we know that we're consolidating into a sixth grade academy model at the middle school thus far and two pre-K-5 buildings. One would be a pre-K-5 building. So I wanted to bring this up because there's a whole website that, and there's different articles and news articles of what this committee voted on and approved. And there's a whole educational academic plan that was already approved that, and there's a lot of things that were not brought to fruition, but were thought through and moved through when it came to both projects. One of the key things that I want to talk about before I go into the timeline is the fact that initially the intent was, and this is still public on the website, for the school to be completed by December of '26. However, the intent right now, and it seems like they may be, yes, I want to be sure that I do not take, if anything happens, because with construction, anything can happen when you're building. So this is what's currently up on the website. But the goal right now and the date that we have right now is that this new school would open in time for August 2026. So I just want to make sure as we go through the timeline, we understand some of the things that I'm talking about. We have as a leadership team, biweekly meetings. And what we've done is created a project plan. In this project plan, we've identified key steps, tasks, and deliverables that we are actually going, our goal is once everything goes well, we are going to meet the dates that we have put in our tentative timeline. The reason why it is tentative is because a lot of our steps rely on other steps. So for example, we need to design a sixth grade academy model. And when we design the sixth grade academy model, then we would also be able to determine what our staffing needs would be. But we need to also gauge the staff to see how do they feel about going to sixth grade? Or do they want to continue? Or, so there's a series of steps and I wanted to, I know the last meeting, Megan did the update and provided overarching feedback that we had started this work. But I wanted to provide evidence of the work so that we and where we are at in terms of our dates. And this is work that has already started. We have just compiled our steps in one place so that we too can, when we come to our biweekly meetings, we can track and say, we are on task, we are not. There's, this is a condensed version of this chart where everyone knows what their roles are. And as you can see, we have overarching topics, including the Amherst School Committee who has to approve our redistricting plan. And there's different things we have to work on. So this is where we are at in terms of the steps and what we are aiming to. Again, this is a tentative timeline. These are our goals because if something happens in the process, we have to pivot and shift. Thus far, we have two consultants that are working with us. One, they have started the work. Tanya is leading this portion with the principals. They've come together to talk about the, and they've had, I think, I believe, two work sessions so far. And it's around the schedule, including what does the model look like? What does that sixth grade schedule look, sixth grade schedule going to look like? Talking about stakeholder engagement sessions, feedback sessions. What is that going to look like? So there's some pictures of the work sessions that actually have happened. I've been sending out correspondences to the broader community saying we've not made any staffing decisions, making sure everyone knows that this is a change and a big transition and we're in this together and in this process together. We've been working with Desi as well to keep them updated as to where we are at with this and providing regular updates. And we do plan to start providing more regular updates, especially to staff, because we want to make sure that every step of the way as we shift and as we change, they understand. And I have gathered that, I also think that individuals only think that there's two buildings involved. And so we're starting to craft that communication around. And this is why it's now called Amherst K-6 District Restructuring, because it includes Cracker Farm in terms of the opportunities to redistrict. So our next steps is we're, especially for principals and instructional teams, we are targeting summer planning teams, instructional design, facility setup, student experience. Like everyone has their role and we come back and we meet biweekly to check in. And so where we are, what are our, where we're in terms of our benchmarks. And we're going to continue to provide updates to the school committee and the broader community. We do plan to have listening sessions. I plan to have listening sessions for staff, listening session for community. Every time we have to make a critical pivotal change, we do plan to do those things. And I want to say thank you. I did miss the topping off, but we do have some beautiful pictures of the topping off ceremony and I was represented. Good job, right on time. I was graciously represented by Shannon, who's served in the ED pilot and she did a great job representing me and thank you to the school committees. And so the quote today is, "Education is a passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." And I thought that this was a critical quote to put with the topping off ceremony because what we are crafting in the redistricting of Amherst, restructuring of Amherst K-6 is creating an opportunity to continue to educate students and shift their lives in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Z. Questions? Sarah?
Thanks for that, Dr. Z. I'm happy to see that update in the timeline. So two questions. So for the sixth grade, the discussions about the sixth grade academy, there certainly has been lots of interest in perhaps utilizing some of the ARMS educators and staff, even though the sixth grade is still an elementary grade and not a, not a middle school grade. So are ARMS educators involved in your discussions yet? Because we wouldn't want to get too far along in the planning if there would be pushback against some, like the sixth grade, you know, students who've been studying Spanish. They might want to take the Spanish offering for the seventh and eighth graders. But it'd be good to know sooner rather than later if that, if the region is, would find that acceptable.
So we, so two answers to that. The first one is a lot of the information that I received initially about the sixth grade move was from ARMS educators who had worked on our original project plan. The second part is we haven't reached to that portion of the project as yet. I think that what we have done is hashed out what we currently have in terms of what was the model. There's also the questions of licensure. The licensure for students would be five eight, for teachers, sorry. For teachers and instructors would be five eight if we were to split instructors between the middle school and the Amherst elementary region. But that goes into the staffing design and the sixth grade academy model. Because the model that was presented prior was actually to make the middle school function as a six eight, what we are proposing would be in clear alignment of it being its own academy. So we haven't, we haven't gotten to that step yet.
Okay, may I ask my other question? About the rezoning process for the elementary school districts. Do I, did you say at one point you also have a consultant for that? And regardless of it's a consultant or not, who is going to do that work? I imagine it's a lot of mapping about where students live, about where they're likely to live in the, you know, I mean, it's a complicated thing. So how is that going to happen?
We do, we have a consultant that's working with us on the transportation portion, which is, which will help us with those numbers. They have, I think most recently we've updated our projections. And so we're looking at our neighborhoods and the lines. And so that is, we do have someone to work with us on that. Because in terms of that, that also feeds into how we run our busing and our transportation. So we've combined that together.
Any other questions? You can raise your hand if you have a question because I can't tell. Deb, go ahead.
I sort of have a question. There's a document in the Amherst Town Council packet that didn't get voted last night. It's a draft document that was intended to be sent from finance, well, I think Finance Committee drafted it. Amherst Town Council has not yet voted it. But it includes a request to be included in the process.
To be what?
Included in the process of the sixth, at the sixth grade move.
Yeah, there's a draft memo that didn't, as Deb said, didn't get discussed that set, at the town council meeting last night, that said the town council wanted to, wanted to work with the school committee on various things that in my opinion are not within their purview. So part of my public comment last night at the town council meeting was urging them to remove those sentences from the memo because it wasn't relevant. So it hasn't been discussed, it hasn't been voted on, it hasn't been sent. So I think we will, we'll just wait to see what happens.
Okay.
Irv?
When I look at the timeline, I see draft redistricting maps, December 31st, 2025. And I'm assuming that all the work that would lead up to that would have already been done. And I'm assuming that all the work that would lead up to that would have already been done. I.e., the consultant, whatever you have, would have made the, uh, made recommendations. And, and, and I think that, is that, is, I'm thinking of myself as a parent, and I'm not sure where my kid's going to go. Uh, and we're at December thirty first, twenty twenty five, and I still don't know. And then I don't, I don't see where the parents out there will have anything that they can sink their teeth into in terms of where their kids are going to go. And how much lead time do we think is really necessary for parents to be able to prepare for the, and I'm doing this from experience, because the last time we did it, no one liked it. No one liked, no one, no one liked us, the school committee, uh, and no one liked the, the plan, no, nothing. So I, I guess I would like to see that not repeated. And that anxieties that parents have be answered way in advance of, 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 of beginning of the twenty twenty six, uh, schools.
So I'm going to say, thank you, I'm gonna say, um, a couple of things. The drafting also is, has a same deadline date as a community input sessions. Um, that's right under it. And there is also the approval of the, by the school committee. These are projected dates, like drop dead, these are the last time that this task must be completed. It doesn't mean that that's when it will be completed, but this is like, we can, we cannot go into January and not tell individuals where their children are going to go. Um, but it's also going to take a level of intense community feedback and education. Because again, the first step is making sure that individuals understand that there are three schools involved here that's being shifted. And that's something that, every time I speak about it, even, I feel like even to community members, like I've been saying this repeatedly all the time, it's three schools going into two. So there's, there's, the community input and education section, there's a part on the bottom in terms of communication. And, you know, how do we start to make sure that everyone is, is hearing the message and understands where we're going? So there's things that again are gonna move in tandem. Um, and change is hard, but I am executing a process that I have walked into. And we are going to do it in the best way that we've learned how. So I do agree that individuals shouldn't wait to hear, but I also need to listen before I can make clear decisions, and, and those are all going to happen at the same time. So I need community input sessions to happen, uh, we're gonna be redrafting the maps. We already had the consultants working on the transportation numbers and things. I think it's been about over a month and a half that they've already been looking at that data, and are gonna start to give us suggestions. So a lot of these, these days are drop dead dates, but the process has already taken, like, feet, they've already started to move.
Bridgette, and then Sarah.
Okay, um, well, I think first off, I really appreciate this. I'm glad we're, we're getting, um, not just started, I know there's already been work done, but I'm really glad we're seeing the plan with some more detail to it. Um, you know, I think it, it comes forward with, with a lot of the best practices, some curricular intentionality, which is gonna be really important, the transparency and trying to be clear with the communication, all of those things. I will say, you know, I've been in the district before when there was redistricting, and I think some of the concerns that come up for parents are, how do we minimize disruption for our own student, right? And so having some element where, if there's any way to structure it in so that people feel like there's choice, and since there's a brand new building, then what's also driving the choice towards Crocker Farm? So I think, I don't know what that is, I'm just thinking those might be some like ingredients that could make it more something we're looking forward to, instead of something that feels like a change we wanna get stuck in the mud about. And, um, one thing that stuck out to me in what you said that I just, I'm sure you're thinking about, but I just wanna like say it as clearly as I can, like, um, when we're redistricting, how are we thinking about equity? And equity across the schools and making sure that gets balanced out is such a huge factor in redistricting plans in general. And I just wanna, you know, be like as clear a voice as possible. Like transportation plans are important, but for me, having equity across the district is gonna be more important.
So, I'm gonna say this, the, the programming is going to drive where our students go. Unfortunately, unfortunately and fortunately, we took our two school buildings with our most intensive programs and combined them into one building. And the current, and that's why I'm saying, we're trying to work within a current plan, even an academic plan, that we may have to come back to the school committee who approved it and say, this is not equitable. Um, one of the conversations that we had in our leadership discussion was the amount of actual programming and load that we would be putting on in, in a new building, is that truly equitable, and what are we doing to the district, to a leader or a leadership team? Or, or, you know, like, those are the conversations that we've had, that we now need to also engage our educators in when they return in the fall, around how they feel around that. And so there's a lot of things that, in terms of the, the pre-planning, I have questions about. Um, but also we've sent out our survey recently, our first survey has gone out to staff, asking them, you know, kinda to capture the climate and culture, some of their concerns and the questions that they have, so we could kind of formulate our listening and our FAQs as well. Um, so if you haven't finished the survey, please do. But, you know, we're trying to, to, to address those questions. And equity for me is one of my biggest concerns in terms of the load in the new building.
Sarah, and then we're gonna move on to the next agenda item. You did have one. Okay, Sarah and then Deb, and then we're gonna move on.
All right. So I assume Desi is involved at many points in this. And if they need to approve decisions along the way, is there enough time built into this for those things to happen?
Yes, so on the timeline, for example, under facilities, operations and logistics, it says lease submitted to Desi for approval December first, twenty twenty five. The lease, even though, um, the, in my regional hat, on behalf of the region, I would start negotiations with the town manager for the, the rent. I think it's the town, town manager and the chair for the rent. Then, that agreement, once finalized, 'cause the town manages the buildings for, for, for even elementary. So, once that agreement is realized, that agreement cannot be finalized until the commissioner signs. So that has to go in December. So we have built in those dates. Um, and we have our monthly meetings that we meet with our Desi representatives to make sure that we're doing things in alignment with, and, and that's on the regional side, our regional agreement and meeting these dates, so yes.
Deb.
So three quick things, um, I'm sure you thought of it, but I can't help but say it, that time on learning and busing for students going to Common Antes and the delays involved is, is really critical. It's a small number, but it's really essential in making this all work, you knew that. Um, it would be nice to have an FAQ page, because in these days, people will use those resources more than they will listen to us at six thirty at night. And, um, and yes, it's gonna be a lot of focus on how to roll out the districting. So certainly before the information drops here, we need to be really, we, you, your team, um, really needs to be very thoughtful about how that information's, what time families need ahead of that to process in their own homes and in their own school buildings, before it becomes something that somebody finds out by watching us at six thirty on Tuesday night.
I agree, um, it's gonna be a balance between districting and programming. And, um, it's, it's going to be, the next year or so is going to be a long haul for the Amherst District, 'cause individuals are going to be tasked between both.
But, but I'm just saying, give people time to.
No, I, no, I agree, I'm just saying like, it's going to be, it's going to, we're up for it, and we're gonna have those conversations. I'm just saying that, like those, that's where we're gonna have to start the conversations, around where do programming lie and why? And, and start to garner feedback in that regard.
Okay, 'cause I, I, I just wanna say that I had a kid who found out about a travel team roster in school, and it was not a pretty thing at home, because it was not a safe space to process that. Thank you.
Okay, if you have any other further questions, feel free to send them to myself or Dr. Z. Moving on to fiscal twenty five budget transfers. Hello, Shannon.
Hello.
Great, she's got it on this, on the screen, we've got it on the screen behind us.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I have done a review of where Amherst, um, schools will land as of June thirtieth, and, uh, we have to request a budget transfer to move between different, um, what, cost centers that they're called. Um, so with that, I have put together a list of, of where I think we need to increase or decrease. Um, so part of that, at the beginning, is substitutes. I wanna increase the substitutes line by thirty thousand, because we are, are over what we originally budgeted for substitutes. Um, we're slightly over in our district-wide, um, regional education slash other category. Um, and the, the, this is our after-school tuition subsidies, um, so just a small increase there. Our district-wide sped, um, account lines, there was an unprecedented influx of students in our ILC and building blocks programs, and, um, some extra out-of-district costs that were not, uh, known at the time that the budget was put together. So we, I'd like to increase that line to balance that. Um, some increase to our program development line, um, which is, it was slightly, it's slightly over, and that's lines that contain, uh, expenses for Common Antes, social studies, math, English. All of those lines are within there, so a small increase. Um, the district-wide support is our, um, McKinny Vento Transportation. And, um, like I've mentioned this before, there has been a large increase in this, in FY twenty five that we have not seen in the past, and that's something that we don't always know where that will, will land. So I, I would like to increase that line. There was some overage in our ELL, so a small increase of thirty-one hundred there. An increase to, um, our administration section, which is heavily our, to cover our legal fees, some additional audits that we did, and partly, um, the consultants for the sixth grade, um, move and the merging of the two elementary schools. Uh, then we have our facilities, uh, to fourteen thousand to cover some contracted services um, for, within our buildings and supplies. Um, and I'd like to take this up from, uh, our, some of our school accounts were underutilized within, across the three elementary schools. Um, IS was underutilized, and risk and benefits, uh, you'll notice a huge chunk is coming out, if not mo- most of it, from this section, which is our health insurance. And the reason why that is so under, it's not because we didn't spend it, but because that's where we had applied ESER from FY, what was left over, and we put into this budget. It was the easiest one line to take it from, track it easily, know where it was. Um, and, and so, so that's why that line is way under, it's because of those ESER funds and not because our insurance wasn't high, because we know that it is. Um, so with that, I would ask that the school committee, um, vote to approve this memo.
Thank you, Shannon. I'm gonna make the motion, and then we can discuss it. I move to modify the fiscal twenty five operating budget by making budget transfers between cost centers as shown in the Director of Finance's memo dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deb. Okay, uh, questions?
Yeah, I have a question, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Deb, Sarah and then Herv.
I have a question, but not about this motion, about the implications going forward, so can I ask it after we, we're done?
Sure, that would be great, thank you. Uh, Sarah.
Well, I'm gonna jump in, it might be the same question. We won't have ESER funds next year. So, I just hope we are FY twenty six budget. Um, I don't know, I, I guess I have to hope we don't run into this problem next year, because where will the money come from?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that, um, we ran into this problem because we were overspending. Um, but there, i- in any budget, there's always going to be a time where some items you don't spend as much as you think, or, uh, things happen with staff and turnover, or, um, people hired at different rates than what was projected, lower, like, these things happen all the time. Um, and so, uh, to the point about the health insurance that I did heard, we, we budgeted the full amount that we needed to, so we should not be over in twenty six for that. Um, but we always ask to shift between lines, because it's very hard to predict how we, I'm sorry. How everything will end up panning out, but if you go back in history, these requests are always done sometime at the end of the year, after we've had a full review of where we are.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
Does that mean then that there, you could have proposed taking money from other accounts? I mean, it was easiest to do it from the risk and benefits, 'cause that's where you put the ESER funds. But it could, the problem could have been solved a different way, is that the case?
Yeah, I, you know, I would have had to do a lot more, decreasing a lot more different account lines to piece it together, this was just the easiest.
Right, okay, thank you.
Herv, and then Bridgette.
I'm, I'm, so I, I, I missed the whole thing on risk and v- benefits, 'cause that's a large number. So why did that occur?
Because we ca- carried over, uh, a portion of our ESER three could go until September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So we carried that over to support our operating budget in FY twenty five. So we had to apply it by September thirtieth. So we moved a huge chunk of our health insurance onto ESER, which removed it from the operating budget.
Wow, that's pretty clever. Anyway, thank you.
Bridgette.
I think that when you look at all the numbers, nothing looks too enormous, except that, um, number for, you know, half a million for special education. And what I remember at this time last year was, was similar movement with the, you know, within the budget, where big chunks are moved to special education. Now, I wanna see our, our students with any kind of differences getting every bit of support we can do for them, but I also, at the same time, really get concerned about the, the big chunk of money and like, are there ways to reduce it that still can have the same or similar outcomes for our students? So I know not all that's in your lane, Shannon, so, but I'm just putting it out there for other people whose lane it is in.
Uh, yeah, to, to that, I will say, um, the, the, the special education is very hard to predict every year, because students come in, um, throughout the year that all have different needs, so it's, so we do the best, I work with SSO, to project what we're gonna need for the next fiscal year and count our IDA funds and count circuit breaker funds that we can apply. Uh, but we just never know where that, will that'll always land. So, uh, special ed is definitely a wild card for a lot of aspects. Um, one thing I also wanna know, and I don't wanna go too far off topic here, but say a student chooses in to our district, and we don't, we don't know any information, and, um, we accept them. And if they do have special education costs, that is reimbursed, and that goes into our school choice revenue, which overall helps our budget. But we do not apply that, those school choice funds to the special education lines. We historically have not done that, even though a lot of those claims money come in for special ed. And we can't start to do that, because we have something called maintenance of effort, it's MOE. And Joanne will be really happy that I'm saying this right now. Um, so every year, we have to spend, um, uh, more MOE, maintenance of effort, than we did the previous year. And if we don't, then, uh, I believe it's fifteen percent of our IDA funds have to go. And if we don't, then, I believe it's fifteen percent of our IDA funds have to go towards very specific funding, as opposed to using it in the way we would like. So, if we cannot, so what, what I'm trying to say here is that although there are these high costs, that a lot of the school choice money that supports the overall operating budget does come from special ed, but we don't apply it to special ed, because it was never done initially. And if we didn't meet our MOE and using school choice to lower how much we spent on special ed, then lowers our MOE, it puts our, the district in a difficult position. So I just wanna throw that out there, something, a conversation for another time, but something we never really talk about. And I know Joanne will be happy I said it.
Thank you, Shannon. Are we ready to vote? Okay, Jennifer votes yes. Irv?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, our next agenda item is fiscal twenty-six budget update. So I wanna kick this off by saying that last night, the town council, the Amherst Town Council passed, of course, Amherst Town Council, the town, passed the town manager's recommended budget, which includes a five percent increase for the Amherst Elementary budget, for a total of twenty-eight point three million. Councilor Mandy Jo Hanneke attempted to lower the amount for the school district by two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, which is the amount that the town manager proposed pulling from free cash via a motion amendment. Fortunately for us, the amendment failed with one yes vote and twelve no votes. The budget then passed ten to two. So I believe that Shannon has, that we, and we posted on board docs, the presentation from, from this body's May twentieth meeting that showed the impacts of a five percent budget. So I'm just gonna ask Shannon or Dr. Z, is there anything different to, today versus this May twentieth presentation and information?
I'll answer from Shannon. No?
No, the answer is no. This was the same exact thing I presented on May twentieth, so I just wanted to include it.
Great, thank you. Sarah?
Should we vote on this? Do we need to?
Nope, we don't need to. We, we, we sent our recommendation.
Right.
They told us what they're giving us, and that's all we need to do.
Yeah. But the changes that must be made, I would think the school committee should endorse them.
The school committee, let's see.
Or approve them, or, cuz we sent a six percent budget, right?
We did.
And...
So you're voting to approve?
This.
Okay. So you're, you're motioning to...
So basically ratifying.
Ratifying.
Yeah.
Would, would you like to make a motion, Sarah?
Sure. I move that the committee approve the positions to be restored at five percent, as opposed to positions restored at six percent, which we voted in March, I guess.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion or questions? Bridget?
I first, just wanted to just either make a slight correction or make a slight error. I'm not sure which one. But my, my ears told me last night at town council that two counselors, Hanneke and Ryan, voted against giving us the five percent, and instead for four percent. So...
I, that's not my recol, that's not my recollection, but it's, it's just a report. It's, we're not gonna read it into the record or anything.
No, I just think it's important for voters to know who's supporting the school budget and who isn't. And those are the two that at least argued against it.
Irv, and then Deb?
Oh, I'm, oh, I, I was just startled by the fact that George would have voted against this. And it would be good to get that clarified.
Okay, let us know when you find out. Deb?
I'm not gonna...
I had a question about the, the positions that are not being restored, cuz I saw an advertisement for the building blocks position. Is that the, um, school spring? But that was one of the positions we had that didn't make the one pers... We added positions when the town went from three to four, three and a half to four, and then there was a four to five. And I don't think building blocks was in the four to five. I thought it was in the six percent.
So there's some positions that we have to advertise due to licensure? There's also some positions that we're advertising due to, like, to turnover?
Yeah.
Like projected individuals who have... Severed ties with the district. So I'm not sure where that position would fall, but that position is critical enough that we do need it in the upcoming school year.
Okay.
So we have a motion to approve the cuts that are, are proposed with a five percent budget. Sarah, how do you vote?
Aye.
Irv?
Yes.
Uh, Deb?
Point of order?
Yes.
What happens if I say no?
You may, you may say no.
But what are the consequences of us voting it down?
True. That's a good, that's a good question. Let's find out. No, this is part of, this is part of your, this is part of your deliberation, is you wanna know what will happen if we vote it down.
Yeah.
I would imagine then the superintendent has to then go back and put forth something that would pass.
With the constraints provided, with the...
Within the five percent provided, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Bridget?
Yeah, I'm, I'm similarly on the fence. I just want to, like, also as part of deliberations, remember, we started out with six percent. We felt like that was what was best. We went down to five point five, and now we're at five percent. And like Deb was pointing out, there's special ed positions in there that we felt were vital. There's other positions in there that, that people are, people are expressing to us. They're already feeling strapped in their jobs, and then there's cuts. So, I'm gonna vote yes, because that's reality, but I don't like that reality.
Understood. And Jennifer is a yes, so it passes unanimously. Yes, Deb?
So my question from the budget adds or cuts can just be shooed, corn in here. Can, is there a way of tracking the increases, and unexpected increases in our budget that are, that we're required to provide? The special education being one of them, we had students, we need to meet those students' needs. We had the same thing happen with a Wildwood sixth grade? I don't remember which class, in the fall. One of, one of the important things, I think, to start this communication with the town about is, you know, you have this much money to, to deal with, and this year, we clearly have an ability to move that five hundred thousand from ESER funds, which Counselor Ryan has insisted we misspent. And we over, overemployed people because of ESER funds, which is obviously blatantly incorrect.
Is there a question?
Yeah. Can we track that? Can we go back five, seven years and keep track of expenditures unexpected when the budget was passed that we were, we had to meet? And break those down?
So I'm gonna answer for my team in saying, I'm not sure what it's gonna take to go backwards. But I would like to see what we're doing to go forward.
Okay.
So, the business office and HR meet regularly as two teams, but they also, the, the two directors meet and have conversations, as well as with other directors. Shannon tracks spending, that's the Q one, Q two, but she goes down into why, you know, things. And then in our new unified talent system, to approve any position to be posted, it has to be approved by HR, it has to be approved by the business office, and it has to be finally approved by myself before it's posted. HR to determine what the replacement is, is this a position, you know, qualifications before it's posting. And they keep track of who the replacements are in that. The business office looks to make sure that the funding codes are correct, that funding is available for the position, and they can halt it. So, it's, the order is business first, to make sure funding is available, then HR to make sure that this is a position that is, you know, in alignment with what is supposed to be posted, and then the superintendent, final approval. I say all of that to say that we are putting systems in place to track vacancies, to track spending, and the two divisions that deal with this work very closely together. So they would be the ones to, to be, better say yes, but I do know whenever we ask convers, have conversations, that's why Shannon is able to say, the reason why this is five hundred thousand is because we had to hire. I'm sure she can go deeper and say, four par professionals, and I'm sure Jen can then say, those four par professionals were assigned to Wildwood, to, to Wildwood, three to Fort River, and what time of year that was.
So follow up, you said going backwards, not necessarily. Could we do FY twenty-five?
We, we could.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you. I'm gonna move us on to the next agenda item. If there are any other questions, you can feel free to email them to Dr. Z or myself. The next agenda item is approving minutes. We have four sets of minutes. We're gonna try to bang through these quickly. So I'm gonna start with, do it in chronological order. I move that we approve the minutes for the March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions? Yes, Sarah, go ahead.
Uh, the superintendent's update, first bullet. I think the mentor support was Nick Yaffe, not Derek Shea. Or...
I, I do recall hearing, yeah, for Tara.
Well, was not Nick?
No, Nick was not a mentor support for Tara. Nick, Nick was a administrative leadership support for Tara. The mentor for Tara who supported Tara was Derek Shea.
Okay, so I didn't imagine his name, but it was for a different, thank you. That was my only comment.
Sarah, how do you vote?
Aye.
Irv?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Bridget?
Aye.
And Jennifer's an aye. Thank you. The next set of minutes is for March...
Yeah, should be twenty-six.
You know what? I think I confused myself. The March twenty-six minutes are actually from March twentieth. I posted the same document twice. March twenty-six was our budget forum, for which I don't think we need minutes. Or whether, I didn't generate minutes for that, because it wasn't a meeting at which any decisions were made. So we actually only have three sets of minutes for today. No, wait.
Wait, they're different minutes. They're different meetings.
Sorry, I was confused. It was, a different one was March...
Twenty-six is what you said in your email.
I did, and that, that was not the budget forum. Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Is the document correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I confused myself.
We must've had the budget forum in February.
In between there. I think it was the twenty-fifth. Okay, so I move that we approve the March twenty-sixth minutes. Second, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions or comments or revisions?
Just with that date change, right?
The date, right. Okay, so just the date at the top is wrong?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We will approve them as amended with a date correction. Jennifer votes yes. Irv?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you. The next set of minutes is April fifteenth. I move that we approve the April fifteenth minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bridget. Any questions or suggestions? Irv, how do you vote?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Jennifer's a yes. And then finally, May twentieth. I move that we approve the May twentieth minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bridget. Any questions, comments, Sarah?
Yes, on the second page, under FY twenty-six budget update, fourth bullet, position's not restored. Second open bullet, says comma, yes, that's all.
Auto correct. Okay, I will fix that. So we will approve the minutes as amended. Sarah, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bridget?
I just noticed a typo as well at the bottom with the two names of the district administrators under executive session. And then yes.
Okay, I will fix those as well. Thank you. Deb?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
And Jennifer's a yes. All right, warrants have been posted. We have no gifts. And I'm gonna ask for future agenda planning, that if you all have any ideas for future agenda planning, that you just email me, so that we can move on to the next part of our meeting. Thank you. I'm gonna suggest that we recess for five minutes while our school committee colleagues from the other committees join us. So we will reconvene at eight o'clock. Thank you. You don't wanna keep the petition? Okay, sounds good. Okay.
I'm not gonna be here long. Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Sorry I ditched you yesterday, Anna.
You ditched Anna yesterday?
Were you in that seat? I was surprised.
...